So on behalf of the Grand Rapids basketball, present and past, I would like to just give names to Kate one more time for 25 years.
How awesome is that? Congratulations again Kate. Thank you for being my example for all of us. Next on our agenda, I'd like to invite to microphone our student board of education representatives, Emilia Black and Amelia Schoolware up for updates on high school activities.
Okay, we have had three virtual learning days in the past couple of weeks and they've all gone over very well. On a normal virtual learning day, students long on at 7:50 like normal to their first period class. All times of classes stay the same throughout the day with the exception of having no flex. Many teachers opt to have a live stream going during the class as if you were actually face-to-face. Others, whether it be due to wifi or the lack of need to discuss this topic or assignment face-to-face, choose to simply post the assignment in Google Classroom where everyone can see. Overall, students and teachers alike seem to have adapted well to this mode of learning. This week, the choir department is putting together the beloved dinner and a show. Dinner and a show is usually a full sit-down meal accompanied with various choir members performing through the night. Since that wasn't a possibility this year, the choir took a new approach. Instead of buying tickets, the community could donate either food or money to the Merrill Food Pantry. This was the dinner part. For the show part, all choral groups are recording videos of themselves singing their respective pieces that will all be combined into one seamless video uploaded to the choir Facebook page. The choir department has done this for every performance so far and the community seems to enjoy that they can still hear the voices of the M U Jester. This performance will end up on the Facebook page in the coming weeks. In the ACT practice test, all juniors took was last Thursday, the 11. Many juniors appreciated the opportunity to see what they need to improve on and how the real ACT will go on March 9.
So sports this winter have gone very well for Merrill High School. In fact, we have a senior, Audrey Leffing, who is part of the storm hockey team and at 7 o'clock tonight, they're going to be competing against Temple Wall Falls, a nominee in the state's semifinals. Other sports have also done very well. The boys' basketball team won their first playoff game last night against Lakewood and so they're going to be advancing with a plan for on Friday. As winter sports come to a close, many people are already looking forward to spring sports and as with all of the sports this year, everyone has been really happy to pick tickets and participate and compete and do something that they love. And FFA week is coming up from February 23rd to the 26th and this is something that's become sort of the tradition at Merrill High School. Each of these days includes different dress days and activities throughout the day. So on Tuesday, it's Guess That Country Song. Wednesday is Jeopardy. Thursday is Tractor Tour. And on Friday, it was going to be Markle. And then on the following Monday, we're going to announce the winner of the bullet contest. And another thing that's happening is we just entered the peak part of scholarship season. So all the local applications were due on the 9th and so they've all started going to committees to be reviewed and to decide who gets those scholarships. And those for the students that are graduating and will be receiving scholarships, they've been registering for their courses for next year. And so this has gone pretty well from what I've heard from everyone's participativeness. And a lot of people are excited for different classes that they'll be able to take next year because Merrill High School offers a lot of different classes from like music, technology to competitive sports or electronic. And so that's something we're looking forward to.
All right. Thank you Amelia and Levi. Are there any board members have any clarifying questions on the data they provided or anything else we have for our high school students? All right, seeing no hands up, I'll let you return your seats. Thanks again Amelia and Levi. Next on our agenda this evening will be our administrative reports. So at this time, I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Sample.
Thank you Kevin. Our first report, first and second report come to us from Glenda Ojenski, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, the mid-year achievement gap reduction report and the student monitoring reports for the winter data as presented at the last CTP meeting, which was very well attended by board members. We had great dialogue. You can see the achievement gap reduction report and how far this report has come since its inception in 2015-16. And then also we've got each building represented for the winter data with our most recent benchmark assessments. Are there any questions for myself or Glenda on any of this data? Next, Joe Seaman brings us the monthly data from the primary school for young learners. Any questions for myself or Joe with her report? Cameron Baker, Director of Curriculum or I'm sorry, Director of People's Services and Special Education. In her topic summary, she's highlighting the aspects and the components of Project Search, which we will have one student in participating in Project Search for the coming year. All expenses for this work-based project come out of Fund 27 flow through budget. And she provides other information as well. Any questions for myself or Cameron Baker? Brian Nasher provides the monthly budget update as well as the food participation update. Any questions for myself or Brian regarding the monthly status report or the food participation report? Eddie's report is next, Director of Human Resources. Gives some information about the employee benefits group, liquidated damages collection, presentation from the state convention Eddie was able to present with one of the attorneys from Boardman and Clark at the Wadisby Convention last month. We'll hear a little bit more about that later on in our agenda. And then the staffing plan, which we'll also hear more about as I update the board with the consolidation plan. Any questions for myself or Eddie regarding his report? Next is Kasia Maszak with the technology board update, auditorium upgrades, fresh works update, high school computer science class update, public network changes, consolidation updates, testing prep, E-rate, and getting to know the technology team with Robert Locke. Any questions for myself or Kasia regarding her February update? And then finally, we have my topic summary sheet. For the super task report, I highlighted my monthly activities and meetings. And also wanted to share with you a little bit about one example of our decision-based, or I'm sorry, database decision-making. What I did share with you this time is an example of database decision-making is some of the criteria and ratings that we use. And this one was for selecting principles during our consolidation. I didn't, of course, include any ratings or any names or any scores on this one, but you can see just a glimpse of what we use when any time that we're making decisions. We try to use data as much as possible. Any questions regarding criteria and ratings for database decision-making? I've also participated in administrative rounding. This is the time of year for all the mid-cycle evaluation reviews for administrators, building visibility. Some of you may or may not be interested in my video that I created for Jefferson, so I can remain out of the building but still participate in the Read Across America. So if you liked the book book, that's me reading the book book. You can take a look at that later. And then the ultimate meeting agenda in notes as well as our central office agenda. And then I closed it with the weekly bulletins that are shared with staff. Any questions for me on any portion of my report? And then finally, at board members' request, a few board members, Board Education Opportunity. And so I asked Dale if he would start us off with the Board Education Opportunity, talking about determining custodial manpower and the assignment procedure that he uses. And again, this is another example of database decision-making. And so Dale, if you want to come up and just touch on this topic a little bit and how data is used to have him assign custodial staff.
So pardon me to highlight of the night tonight. So prepare yourselves, audience and board members. I don't know how well the board members can see I'm here, but we have it up on big screen as well. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to look inside how I determine my staffing levels a little bit in our maintenance facility. All right, in the old days, when someone retired or resigned, we just said, welcome to the team. Here's your mop, your room, your keys, and here's your area and way to go. Good luck. We'll see you in a month or a week. You're at a great time. And we take a different approach recently. And that approach is to base the product data that we use over the years to reflect the tasks that we're doing and stuff like that. So we equalize our cleaning areas. And we look at different equipment. We maybe use a little bit smaller items scrubber than larger walk-in scrubber because that equipment gets humiliated faster. We're using different type of mops, like microfiber mops instead of the traditional cotton mops. And maybe some different products that clean better or more effective depending upon the type of material the surface would be. We use some standards set by ISSA, the International Sanitary Supply Association, a worldwide organization that has different standards for K12 markets, hospital markets, manufacturing facilities. But they really talk about things like, you know, what should we be focused on in the school, you know, what are our high-touch goals? I've just got a little picture over here to present very well, ISSA. How do I get the sound here, Dale? Well, it's very, so ISSA looks at things like K12, you know, the data about how many schools contract through, or the virus is now, you know, COVID and stuff. How those absences due to those illness, those illness and absences lead to difference in learning from the children, their absence from school. Substitutes cost us a lot of money annually to pay for their insurance. Where they live on the different surfaces of different schools to be learned. A lot of the high-touch places are probably going to increase their cleaning standards this year. And it's kind of surprising. Everybody thinks those are the highlights. If you look at the video of cafeteria trees, cold water faucets, places where the cameras left or dislocated, computer keyboards aren't as likely to be drinking on. So there's different data we can get to tell us what we should be able to do to clean better and more effectively in school. But those different types of surfaces that we focus our attention on are really important to determine what methods we use to clean these in schools. And we go through, we identify objects, we have chairs, we have sinks, we have desks, we have tables, we have hard floors, we have carpet floors. We run term over and do for those on items, we wash them, we disinfect them, we knock them and sweep them, we wash windows. Then how long it takes to load some of the standards that ISSA develops, it takes so much time to knock for, it takes so much time to wash them, it takes so much time to actually repair them. So we look at the labor we have available and then we optimize our building and our gas in order to utilize the labor we have. Throughout the high school, this is a map of the first floor of high school. These are different zones that our custodians and high school take care of. We have classrooms, we have hallways, restrooms, special use rooms, like practice areas for van employer, DLCs, we have open spaces that connect through your pockets. Then we have doorways, mess to do, we have blocks, we have carpet. All those different types of things. All those areas have different objects that take a little bit of different time to do. This one's a little bit covered. See, on the graphic, it shows that, you know, for example, dustmopping floors, which include hard hallways or classrooms that have a visiting floor. And there's 24,000 square feet of hard floor basically. There's 59,000 square feet of carpet basically. So those are some big ticket items that we look at where it's chewing up a lot of labor. In the background of this program, we just entered in an average labor cost for the facility and the motor carpet. It weighs to about $54,000 of labor and labor cost per carpet. So if we have to look at staffing, what we have available versus having to add extra tasks, for example, like sanitizing every desktop and every table down, every daily. We have to sacrifice something in order to be able to do these extra things. This year, we added three FTEs to the custodian. And that helped out immensely with the more labor that we added to G pool, like having the sanitizing, all these high-touch areas. But something I'm looking at for next year is how we can trim up and be a little more efficient is carpet. We vacuum every square inch of carpet five days a week. If we go down to three days a week, we cut $20,000 of our labor pool for the carpets. So we have to be careful when we do that, how we do it. Because in carpet, there's allergies, dustmasc, things like that. So if we look at our high traffic areas, look at their facility use, auditorium has a hard carpet or surface on the seats and everything. So we look at the use of that and when we're going to hit those high spots. And like I said, that goes, look at, really look how it goes to be used now versus what it used to be. So I just added, what we had for custodians, we had eight custodians that are typically cleaned here today. And the amount of labor they have for in a day minus their break period, and why it's not cleaning that, so we look at, you know, you say, why aren't we cleaning? Well, maybe they have to be cleaning it to set up. There might be a red lamp coming in basically for the board being, they have to set up. This room is typically used as, you know, auditorium for presenting stuff, but for board meetings, custodians have to come in and set up all tables. And the IT part, that's a technology. So there's all types of different things that are not normally dated at these. So we look at all those tasks and all those areas and all those rooms and extract the order across the board. We can see that each one of those zones has a percentage of utilization. As you can see for it all, over 100%, meaning that each custodian has more work in the midday than what time they resolve their duty. So we're not totally alarmed by that. It's based on 200 days per year. And we only have 200 days construction. So those days that we have off, the NSI days, those virtual days that we have now, or catch-up days where we are able to get back to do that high dusting, if you add extra glue and washing, or those surfaces that were sacrificed into sanitizing or desk cleaning. So my goal at the end of the day, as I look at staffing, district planning, is to equalize those percentages. You see our average is about 139%. And each one of those shifts is a little bit plus or minus of that. My goal is to even those out of the range, to be close to 140%. Do you like to see that? It's fair to our staff so that they're not asking to do more than the next person. It's fair to our substitutes. They come in for vacation or for a sick day or something like that, where they're able to say, hey, this substitute or this substitute, here's an area, it's the same amount of work, it's the same amount of task, that we have like different tasks, but the work expectation is the same. And I can also use that as an evaluatory piece as well. So that if I do a spot check in an area, we can say, custodian in the orange area, it looks like the carpets are coming extremely well. So if we have stuff coming extremely well, and I can use that as a real evaluatory piece as we talk about our evaluations I do faculty with them and the ways that we can keep them. So it's just a little bit of look inside how high talkable staffing, what our needs are with staffing for custodial work. Any questions? Want to draw a wide awake? Thank you for your time.
Maybe, yeah. I'll just have a comment. Thank you for the information. I'm obviously a data freak, so I enjoy all this stuff immensely. And one of the things I like about it is it does demonstrate that things are done based on data. And I think I had saw a graph several weeks ago where some size of a janitorial's responsibility was massive compared to another person's. And the perception was is that was a much larger area to clean, but due to the data, it's actually the same amount of work. So it kind of creates a picture of reality too. That might look like a lot of work because it's a big surface area or a big area, but it's actually equivalent to all the work over in a small or labor-intensive area. So.
There are some areas where on the typical detectors, I'll be putting there, if you look at the graphic, I have these investigation methods. It's an empty trash can instead of one, one typical detector. And you might say, why so hard to have an empty trash can? But if you look at where the plates drove to school, they're mostly tied to a rhythm. They're under teacher desk, so they're back in the back of the room. So it takes, when we sell extra steps every day, we go after that trash can. If we train ourselves to put that trash can by the door instead, that's less steps that a custodian has to take, which allows more time over a year and over a career to do other things. And so those types of optimizations that we look at really, how we really bound the data to make things more efficient and and fearless. The square footage thing is big because if you look at the map, it looks like, oh, the green area is much smaller than the red. So maybe the green area has, you know, way more carpet, which takes longer than our school. Or maybe it has more ways of moving or more dance, something like that. By cataloging all the things we have to do, we really, we really can't argue with those statistics.
I think it helps the board to make decisions too. I mean, if you come to us and ask for another FTE and the custodian's half position, it's not on a whim. It's basically a mathematical calculation that is making you ask, which is, I think, my self-confidence to know that it's being asked because it's necessary and it's, as often as you put, substantiate data. So thank you.
Dale, how many full-time employees do you have?
Well, we have 24 custodians and four reals personnel. And then we have a couple of part timers. We have four part timers that help us as well in coverage of patient shifts and illnesses. Or we had a market priest very often. We have an effort for the hallways. We had a lot of jumping off and down. We always did it very well. And we got to do a shuttle to my staff because they've always been more of the good to go the extra mile and cover the road.
How many did you add for when we went to the COVID? Was there extra money there?
We added three FTEs to the department for COVID, which we all get their exact fund before initially. So when we really have, it's seen before too.
It looks like we might be getting more money. Will you be able to keep that then?
That's my intention.
Thank you.
Yeah, since you're here and since it's on the record, I'll go on record saying I interacted with your staff on stage on a regular basis in Merrill School and talked about a group of friendly, welcoming, willing people. And the buildings that you walk into are pristine. I just never seen anything but pristine conditions throughout the district. So pass that under them hats off. They make working in the district a pleasure.
Thank you Dale. That's all of yours. That will be a hard act to follow over the door, but we do have some committee reports to review. Finance HR Committee met on February 3rd and attached for board members to review where the draft minutes. John Smith as chair and other members of the committee are available for questions. Anyone have any questions for the finance and HR committee this evening? Hearing on the next committee will be the CTP, our Curriculum Technology People's Services Committee, which met on February 10th. The draft minutes were provided. Maria Volpe, our chairperson for that committee, is available as well as other members of the committee. the committee. Do we have any questions this evening for our CTP committee? Hearing none, we'll move on the agenda down to unfinished business, so this information will only last a month, and we are looking to talk about the approval of the 2021-2022 school calendar with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school calendar as drafted.
We have a motion from Ron, we have a second. Second by Maria. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic or motion this evening? Start with Brett.
Um, I believe Kevin, I mean, you mentioned it in the last meeting, um, that some people reached out, I had a couple that reached out as well, about having traditionally had a, a break at the end of first semester of the second quarter in January. Um, is there a reason I didn't get carried over into this or just your opinion?
Right, and I did check with administration and our, our, our calendar is very tight. We have 2.9 days built in, but 0.4 doesn't do us any good, so I would say we have 2.5 days built in. And to keep it with our strategic plan, I know we've had instructional minutes that, uh, that have increased as of this year that we've been working through. Uh, we felt that this calendar was probably the best for students as well as teachers, and so that's, that's where we were at that semester day. What I did do is, uh, there was also some input regarding, uh, breaking up, uh, those front-loaded MSI days, and so I did, as highlighted in yellow on my topic summary, August 27th was added as a no school day. Uh, that's before the school year starts with students, it's a no school day for our teachers. We're going to really focus further on in my report on, uh, those front-loaded days and making sure that with the consolidation plan, that we've got enough building days and classroom days so that we can really, every building except for the high school is going to be a little bit different this year. Uh, even under our school for young learners, uh, with new leadership, and so, uh, we wanted to, to be sensitive to that time, uh, with teachers getting to know the staff in their buildings as well as being able to, uh, hit the ground running when our students come. And so, so that's, that's really where that one date went. Uh, we're also getting out one day earlier than expected, and that gives us a four-day break before summer school was to start, so it is a very great type calendar.
Okay. Thanks Brett. Any additional questions on the motion around this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously in a voice vote. Now on our agenda, we'll start with the Board of Education Business. First item will be the approval of the Head Start Federal Grant with the topic summary sheet provided from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2021-22 federal Head Start Grant.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Linda. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our Board of Agenda, Business Agenda, will be the Head Start Community Assessment Topic with the topic summary sheet provided by Jill Seaman, and we do have a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Linda?
I recommend a motion to approve the Head Start 2021 Community Assessment.
Motion by Linda, we have a second. Second by Kendra. Any questions or discussion on this topic or this motion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the approval of contract for additional hours for Head Start Family Support Specialist with an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the additional hours for the family support specialist position to become full-time at Mac's Head Start.
Motion by Kendra. Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the State Education Convention Review. Uh, a number of us virtually attended the 100th Annual State Convention. At this time, I will allow the administration to give a summary of what they saw at the convention. Karen or Glenda would like to come to the microphone and Betty has anything to share based on his presentation. Uh, then, uh, any board members who, who attended virtually, I know Ron and I did for sure, I'm not sure if anyone else were able to, but I will allow, uh, Karen to start things off for us, please.
Good evening. I'm going to come to the table because it allows me to see better. First of all, I'd like to, um, express my gratitude for being, for being able to attend this convention. I will say that having it in a virtual, virtual format was very advantageous because it allowed myself as well as others to attend, um, the various sessions, but also allowed us to be able to continue with our day-to-day operations, to meet the needs of staff and student needs as we went through each day. On Tuesday, there was pre-conference that, um, were pre-recorded, and so that was advantageous that you could go in and, and watch. And, uh, the one that I had done was saying the course for continuous improvement. And, um, it was interesting because districts shared their, um, how they supported in their work and use data to reflect the improvement. Um, and I would say that one real strong theme going through some of these sessions is that it really did indicate and acknowledge that what we're doing is very similar to other districts. So I think it was very gratifying to know that the work we're doing with strategic plan, with the building level set plan, looking at the data and looking at certain outcomes, that we are on the right path. And so that was very good to see. Another, um, session that I attended was about Title IX, and as you all know, I'm the Title IX Coordinator for the district. And I participated in, I use the word extensive training that is required, which is several hours long, so if anyone has something they want to spend some time on, um, it, it's quite in-depth. And again, it really supported, um, a lot of the training and answer questions, um, that participants may have had who have not participated thoroughly in the training, so that was very good. Intentionally aligning strategic goals to action. Again, this really paralleled the session that I watched on Tuesday, again, using those strategic plans, how important it is to have a collaborative, um, team working, you know, between all administrators to develop the plans that we have, example, in the set plans, example, what we're doing in special education to really promote those students going into the regular, in the classroom, et cetera. In closing, I'm going to share, um, I participated in Friday morning, it was called Don't Stop Believing Loneliness in Leadership. In some ways, I wish they would have started this, the conference with this session, because I do feel, and I'm sure there are many that would agree, that being in a leadership position a lot of times can be very lonely, particularly when, um, you're responsible for district-wide, um, issues and really with that goal of supporting administrators throughout the district. Takeaways from that, which really confirm my philosophy, relationship building is at the center of our work. And it, and really talked a lot about that, how important relationships are. Also talked about, um, the amount of hours that those of us in leadership spend, and in reality, if you think about it, we spend more time with our peers at work than we do with our families at home, but it is important, and we wouldn't be here doing it if we didn't find it important and enjoy it as well. In closing, there was a quote that resonated with me. It was from Dr. Avic, Avic Kambor, I may have butchered that name. And he talked about forging connections at work. And he states, "My experience has been that people, that people bring the most of their work when they feel connected to the mission and the people around them." And I think that is so very important, again, as we lead and how we overcome the loneliness and as we work together as a team in a collaborative fashion. But again, I would thank you for allowing me the opportunity, and again, the virtual format was so advantageous to be able to really zone in on a session. I'll be honest, to not fight people to get to a room, didn't get as many steps in as you usually get when you go to the state convention. Um, and it was tough not seeing the vendors, but all in all, um, you were really able to pay attention, focus in, and again, take care of other day-to-day activities that came up and needed of other people. Question?
Thank you, Karen. Any questions specifically for Karen about state convention before we turn it over to Thank you, Karen.
I had planned to stand because I could clearly see everyone, but since Karen said, I guess I will. Um, so like Karen said, I am very appreciative to have the opportunity to attend the, um, state convention. This was my first year attending. Um, I don't prefer to do a lot of traveling away, so having the virtual platform was something I really appreciated. Plus, it allowed me to stay in touch with things happening with students and having accessibility to my email and telephone, because I was also planning for professional development and a million other things. Um, the first session that I watched, um, I actually was in another session and Karen texted me and she was like, "Oh my gosh, you got to be in this session on continuous improvement." It's like having a conversation with you. So I jumped off of the one I was in and joined the continuous improvement, and it was very enlightening. And it gave me, um, I guess, true gratification because it validated the things that we're doing in our district for continuous improvement that truly impacts student achievement. So that was, that was a blessing for me. But in that particular, um, session, they talked about how schools are leveraging quality assessments and routines that guide instructional decision-making, and that's what we're doing with our classroom assessments and making sure that we have a set time that we're doing those and we're monitoring our data. Um, and they talked about following specific data analysis and decision-making routines, and that's what we do with our data results through RTI, and we're changing instructional strategies to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. Just like I said, when we were reviewing the student monitoring reports, it's like, um, you're treating the symptoms of an illness or, uh, trying to figure out what the problem is so that you can educate the whole child in all aspects. Um, and one big thing, which is something that we've been talking about a lot, and it goes back to our current vetting process for our resources, is that the core instruction has to be addressed first, because if we're not getting it right in the classroom for all kids, it doesn't matter what we do above and beyond that, we're still never going to get it right. So core instruction has to be first. Um, and then another big thing that is often hard for, I think, a lot of educators to embrace because they dive into their work so deeply, is that when you look at implementing something new, even if it's just a new process, implementing, implementation research teaches us that it takes a good seven years before things become valid and it fully becomes implemented. And a lot of times when you've done something and you poured your heart and soul into it for a year or two and you're still not, um, seeing all the gains that you would like to, you know, it reminds us that you have to keep on plugging away at it until you can get to that seven-year mark to really see if you truly have reached your plateau or, or not. And within that seven years, it's also very common to have an implementation dip where your data will actually be less than what it could have possibly been when it started. Um, I really enjoyed this, um, session. It was, um, presented by Wisconsin Heights and CISA Two. And while we were in the session, I was trying to communicate with the people to get their slideshow, because they had this whole process that they use with their administrative team. So in a couple of weeks, I plan to meet with Dr. Sample and go over that, and I'm really hoping that we can implement some of those same strategies with our administrative team. But it came to pass that I ran across this, one of the presenters later at another conference, and, and we were in a breakout room together, and I said, "Oh, I watched your presentation. Will you please share your slideshow with me?" And she was like, "Absolutely, and I'll meet with you and I'll give you all of our resources." So that's what true network is all about. Um, another session that I went to was, um, it was called Lunch and Learn, and it was happened to be presented by, uh, my former superintendent, Dr. Colleen Timm. And she talked about characteristics of PLCs and the seven Cs of building a championship team and how the two of those things collide. And overall, the big underlying notes were the relationships that you build with your teams, the collaboration, how important it is, and using data to drive your decision-making to make sure that you are making the best educated decisions that you possibly can. And then I also caught Eddie's presentation on Friday morning, and, um, it was good with he and, um, one of the women clerk attorneys talking about staffing and, um, even though he did have to battle a few technical difficulties, it was good. So I gave him some moral support. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Do we have any other administrators that would like to update on the state convention? Any, anything you'd like to share in your presentation or your experiences?
Yeah, the way I'm doing it, uh, the first time I presented the state convention, um, planning obviously originally when it started, because you start planning the process like the January prior practically, there we started the seven meetings for next year's convention. Um, so nobody obviously knew that COVID was going to happen, but it was still a good experience. Uh, I got a few follow-up emails and things from a couple other folks in the school districts. Um, Doug Whitty was the attorney we presented with, and, uh, it was nice just because not with the presentation itself, but just a lot of the, the dialogue that we had kind of leading up to the presentation. Best of all, all that dialogue is free, yes. So, um, that was very beneficial, but yeah, overall, I think it went well, and it was just a nice, nice opportunity and stuff, so. And if you want the presentation, I think it's attached to the, uh, to my monthly report or whatever. So if you have any questions on it, uh, some of the things that we're going through right now with consolidations and things of that nature are a little bit unique, so probably not a typical year, it doesn't exactly align to our presentation from the convention, but uh, some of the, the dots and bolts pieces there are really important, so.
Any questions? Thank you, Eddie. Thank you. Next, we'll go through any board members that attended. I believe Ron will lead off.
I attended as much as I could. I had trouble getting on, a couple of them that I really wanted to get on, but the three keynote speakers were really good, they really put out a nice... They really put out a nice, not a row or center, just kept answering questions, one after the other, after the other, after the other. He just sat there, kept answering. So it was really nice. Wednesday, I got on the air quality in schools. There's one, set for success, root board member orientation, which I'm working on with Kevin for root board members. And then the operational referendum from Cal-Murray. They lost, and then they rebooted again, and they got it passed a second time. But it gave all the things they did wrong and a lot of the things they did right. So I've got quite a few notes on that. Thursday, I tried to get in on school finance. Computer said I didn't have the right software. I don't know why, but whatever. Friday, again, I couldn't get into the admin superintendent's search. That's the way it was. The other one I found was, Virgil attended the EAA museum tour. And that was really interesting. One guy was talking, explaining everything that in the EAA, and they just had pictures there. It was pretty interesting. I know that it goes well with Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Was there any other board members that attended? Otherwise, I'll just go through my highlights really quick. Certainly is different being virtual. As Karen and Linda both pointed out, certainly grows in guns. So you can be in your office and you can be multitasking and handling that while still not working with people throughout the state. A lot of the topics, just to give you some ideas on what paths people are looking at, rank anywhere from community engagement, leadership, school finance, student achievement facilities, school law, human resources. So really, I look at some of the topics we have or things that we were going through or anticipate going through or that are just something that I would like to expand my knowledge on. So as you can imagine, I did go through some of the ones that Linda and Karen and Ron had already talked about. And I agree with Karen that "Don't Stop Believing: Loneliness and Leadership" should have been probably day one. But some of the other ones included topics on intentionally aligning strategic goals to actions. And then going through how to successfully govern your district together. And it talks about all the pieces in that and not just talking about the board piece or administration, staff, everybody, and the stakeholders, and all the pieces of evaluation, all the way down to word self-evaluation process. Some topics and tips there. We talked about the pros and cons and things that are interesting when it's virtual, the delegate assembly. Although this was my third time representing us at the delegate assembly. Imagine 300-plus people trying to fit in with Robert's rules and parliamentary procedure and trying to click the little button that says raise your hand or adding something in chat to motion or to call to, to vote a topic. Certainly was, was interesting. And a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of positive efforts going in there. Always trying to fine-tune some of the processes that we work on. So I did, you know, some of our key work is superintendent evaluation and talking about that continuous improvement conversation and some tips there that I got to share with the board and Dr. Sample. May not be an exciting topic for everyone, but certainly something that we try to stay in front of. As Ron mentioned, the keynote speakers, you know, were phenomenal. How do you not sit there and listen to Donald Driver, looking at where he came from? Everyone seems to remember him as the Green Bay Packer wide receiver, but that wasn't the path he was on, certainly. So no spoiler alert, but go, go look up his story and read more about Donald Driver. One of the quotes that he said that resonated with me was, "Don't climb the mountain so that people can see you. Climb the mountain so that you can see the world." And so basically paraphrasing, hey, it's not all about look at me, look at what's out there and what are our opportunities. One of the other things that I would, I would mention, and it seemed kind of quirky, but I decided to try that. They had a thirty, a couple thirty-minute sessions on speed networking. And what happens is you would go into a Zoom meeting and the moderator would match you up from someone from a different district or a different affiliation or association. So I got to speak for five minutes with the director of communication from Mineral Point. Or I got to talk to someone from Skingo, Norway, or Greendale. I was fortunate enough to meet John Ashley, the Wosby executive director, and talk about what's going on at the state level. So while I wasn't sure what I was getting into when I clicked on that, it was neat to meet the people. And a lot of them that were encouraged to do that were presenters like Eddie that would go out there and meet other presenters to network and to, to talk to each other. So, you know, all in all, that was, you know, a very good, good experience. So thanks to the district for, for that opportunity to better myself and to bring that data back to everyone. Any board members have any additional questions for Ron or myself? Go ahead.
Did I understand, you say that we're taking out a new member orientation initiative?
Yes, I was talking to Ron on that. I did not sit in on that virtual meeting. I was in a different, I encouraged Ron to go down that road and see what other districts are doing differently and collaborate with Tammy and Dr. Sample currently. And just some of the things in there, talking about the checklist to make sure that all of the data is provided. And just some of the gaps perhaps that we don't look at, well, we do, board members. So that is something that I'm going to sit down with Dr. Sample and Tammy and go through a little more formal process. To be honest, while we do something similar in Dale's presentation with the A-Welcome Board, and then you said by your nameplates, this is Robert's rules, and here are the rest of us. And we do provide more data than that. But certainly, we're pretty reliant on Tammy and some introductions there. So it is a process we look to improve on, yes.
Is it something you consider placing on for new agenda items that shows up as on the business and the information?
That would make sense. And if you want to take that even to a committee level, it'd be good just to go through that. But certainly, we could talk about that here also.
Yeah, just, I think it's a great idea. Very relevant and needed. I can't think of a committee that would go to since it's a full-court circumstance. So perhaps at the, towards the end, we could recommend it as an agenda item for the future.
We can just make a note of that. And I'll confirm that, I'll get the basic topics on reshoot together with Dr. Sample and Dr. Skaydus. And I'll look to Kendra and Ron also for some of the things that they could see as, as being fresh into the situation, either being newly elected or appointed, as to what things would be helpful. Ron, something to add?
It was a hundred-hour session, fifty minutes, something like that. And I took copious amounts of notes, working on getting them together in some kind of a format. And I didn't get it today. I was trying to get it for a date. But I will get it in a decent form. I'll give it to Kevin and Dr. Sample, make a look at it over. And yes, bring it to the board, it'd be a good idea.
One of the additional things that were noting was, being that it was virtual, everything, almost every presentation was recorded and that we had access to that for almost a year.
I think the calendar year had said, so I can look at any one of these.
So I'll verify that as well and go back and watch that for, for assistance in that process. Any other questions?
The same with the referendum one, that I looked at, that all kinds of notes just for us to look at when we're getting started. Probably the people we have working on it will take care of it, but it's just a few things to look at, where they made their mistakes. I'll have that also for you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ron. We don't have any other questions. We'll move on on the agenda. The next item is the consideration of renewing transportation contracts with our current vendors with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. This is information only at this time. Any board members have any questions on this topic summary? Dale, if you'll come up to the microphone, will ask the question. Perhaps Dr. Sample has an answer as well. But I will turn it over to Linda with a question.
Yeah, I was just reading over some of this, and I was just kind of wondering, what is the transportation software? Is that something that's like to your store partners? Is this something completely different?
We have a software program called Versa that we bought, purchased a few years ago. It's obvious, it's robust, transportation, about $40,000. And that program does, it helps us optimize routing. So it tells us what time of the hour we pick up, the weather risk, and what bus levels we can be on to use that to work with contractors to optimize our bus loads if they're selling at $60,000.
So you're using the transportation software and have the vendors?
Correct.
And then how does that get collaborated to them, then?
We worked closely with them when we had, so that transportation software synchronized with Skyward on a daily basis. So anytime we have a student enrolled or student unrolled, it does sync with Skyward every morning. So it tells us if this child is not enrolled or not willing to go to the city move. So we have the loan office puts a manager in there or we have to tell the savers, we can figure that out. We have more information from that. So then we take that information, we send off contractors and we help with all the things that help out. So when we start again a year, and coming next year, when we, I look at some of these kids at different grade-level schools, do a lot of vibration with them, determine their transfers and power. Get kids what else come to the school. Some families might have four shops, and they have no entry, no real place to go. And you have no other grade-level level. So it takes a lot of work because contractors are extremely difficult to communicate on how this is going to last. And the willingness for boards to treat these things officially is a tough question.
Thanks, Dan.
Ron, go ahead.
By my house, and I can almost set my clock to, it's almost a minute every day. So they must have it down, these roads, very well timed.
Yeah, we've worked closely with Ryan Orf and Peter Sitt, and some of the events were there. They put up avenues with contractors that have good partnership with the district. They really, they look at it realistically, and really others that are not afraid to look at something new and try to look at it from a different perspective. So we're together very well with them, and they're very open.
Additional questions?
Not a question, just a comment that this is, was addressed in the human resource and finance committee that Dale presented. And one of the things we were seeking was a matrix or a ratio in order to somehow determine whether we were receiving value compared to value to other districts. And that has been determined to be the case. And that it's what, what we spend in transportation based on the district size and the complexity of our district is fair. And what's, what we ended that meeting was just taking the information back to develop the contract, because there were certain issues, or not necessarily issues, but things such as terms, the length, insurance requirements that they're going to review mutually, background checks to make sure that the new contract was aligned with what the district's expectations would be for background checks. So the exercise not only produced a value determination, but then the dialogue between the vendors and Dale, because Dale's relatively new at transportation. And it's, is it been a year or how long have you been?
Yes, officially, it's been a year and a half. They really allowed me to take a few backlogs out because I didn't get very familiar with the program.
So I guess from the committee's perspective, it turned out to be a healthy exercise. And then the goal to be having a contract available for approval before the end of term, which is June coming up.
Any additional questions for Dale? All right, thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda will be the Prairie River Middle School course descriptions with an attached topic summary sheet from PRMS, Prince Orion Martinovich. They recommended a motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the Prairie River Middle School course descriptions for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any questions or discussion on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the DPI daily use agreement with an attached topic summary sheet from Kesha Mashick. And the recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
I'd like a motion to approve the DPI's daily use agreement.
Motion by Ron, second by Nups. Do we have any questions or discussions on this topic or motion this evening?
I just have a couple questions, and I'm sorry I missed that the other day at the meeting. I guess, maybe I'm missing it because the contract's a little goofy. But is there any cost to us from DPI on this agreement? Or anybody, like parents or anything like that?
No, there's no cost. It's simply just obtaining approval to share some of our information with the internet service providers so that we can better determine different providers that our students can obtain internet access from.
Great, thanks. That's all they needed.
No problem. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Any other questions while we have Kesha up here? Thank you, Kesha. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the MacBook refresh with an attached topic summary sheet from Kesha. Any recommended motion from our CTP committee? Do we have a motion this evening? Nups?
I recommend approval by Apple MacBook volt and corresponding Vivec volt value at a minimum of $69,300.
Motion by Nups, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any questions or discussion on this topic or motion this evening? All right, Mr. Smith, question?
Because the motion contains a minimum of $69,300, if it's not $69,300, does it make the motion come back?
$69,300?
Yeah, I guess the question is probably more in line for Kesha. But I just, are we restricting ourselves? Or is he quite confident it'll be $69,300 or greater?
Yep, so when I obtain the Vivec... Yep, so when I obtain the buyback quote, I make them give me a guaranteed bid all to a certain date, so I give them that at the summer, so we should be solid.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Any additional questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the Strategic Planning, Review Preliminary Budgets, Documentation, Assumptions, Forecasts, and Options with the topic summary sheet provided from Brian Dasher, which is informational only this evening. Once everyone has now, since everyone now has reviewed that, does anyone have any questions this evening from Mr. Dasher or Dr. Sample on this topic? All right, thank you, Brian, for that information. Next item on our agenda is Niola's Volume Thirty, Number One, Technical Corrections. Just a reminder for our bylaws, 0131.1, the superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through our formal rulemaking procedures, and the superintendent then is to inform the board of any such changes in our next regular board meeting. So, at this time, using that opportunity for Dr. Sample to provide that data for us based on the overview from Niola. Is there anything you want to highlight in that, it's pretty self-explanatory, John, and Dr. Sample?
There are just all technical changes anywhere from legal citations being added to language.
All right. Anyone have any questions on that? Just procedural, make sure we have that recorded. Otherwise, next on the agenda is the Agenda Item Four, Building Configuration Timeline Updates. It's informational only, but the topic summary sheet is provided and updated by Dr. Sample. Dr. Sample, if you'd like to take a few moments to highlight that, please.
The topic summary sheet, any additions that I make, I will hold, so that you can see progress from month to month. The most recent steps that we've done is that the building principals have received their assignments for the 21-22 school year, and you can see those assignments that are bolded. I'm also currently working with administrators to identify teachers based on our criteria. Depending on what happens with Maple Grove, if you combine Maple Grove with the consolidation, we're looking at ten teachers for economic non-renewal, preliminary non-renewal. If it's just in district, we're looking at five teachers. And so, the process that I outlined earlier in the meeting is very similar. We're using as many data points as we possibly can, and working with the principals to identify that list, and so that's where we're at with that. All of the special education and pupil services personnel have received their building assignments for next year based on the number of students and IEP information contained in every student's IEP. And then we heard a little bit from Dale tonight, so once the transportation contracts have been finalized, routes and times will be established based on efficiency as well, and we're looking at staggering those times, the start times and the end times of our buildings in order to be more parent-friendly for those parents who choose to transport, and as well as for our contracted services or transportations, to be able to get our students there on time and pick them up on time. So that's what we've been working on in March, looking forward to more progress. We are on time right now per our strategic timeline, and so that's the progress in this last one.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Any questions for Dr. Sample on this topic? Hearing none, we'll move on on the agenda down to Consent Agenda. Before I ask for the motion, I'll ask if anyone would like anything bold tonight from the Consent Agenda. Otherwise, I would request a motion, please. Maria?
Consent Agenda Items A through D, which includes minutes of the January 27, 2021 meeting, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $1,808,617.16, and the personnel report is presented in donations totaling $1,580.53.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All right. There's a typo in there, if you could get that corrected for the, correct it, please, Tammy.
Is it, is it, is it $1,800, or is it $10,800?
You want...
Like two zeros?
There's one extra zero, then. You did realize it correctly.
Yeah, you did.
So the back clarification.
I actually, I didn't have that on, but we were, with that number, and the total budget was $1,000.
And I'll ask for a friendly amendment. Maria, I would look to you for a friendly amendment, then of that number on the other. I thought I was...
That would be consulting these things. Then I would ask for a friendly amendment of the point vouchers and the receipts total
Thank you, Maria Nubs, you are wonderful. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Do we have any abstentions? Next item on our agenda is the Items for Future Meetings. We had noted a couple already. Mr. Smith, do you want to highlight those really quick?
New board member orientation, if they set on the agenda, future meetings, that's simple. I also have one other, and that would be the superintendent dates review, not the personal personnel review, but the review of the programs of whether we're going to continue, which that lies to the board, and it doesn't really have a committee that it can go to.
In this statement, all those committees at the board level. Any additional items that board members would like added for future meetings? Keep in mind, if there would not only go, and you've added through a committee, that we can pass that information along through the committee chairs and add it to the next appropriate agenda. Otherwise, a topic such as this, you can send to myself or Dr. Sample if you're not thinking of those this evening. Not seeing any other hands up, just a reminder of some items. Our radio schedule, the program reviewing tonight's meeting will be on BlueJ730 Radio tomorrow at approximately 8:15 a.m. Our future meetings include a special board meeting on Thursday, February 25th at 6:00 p.m. here at the auditorium. The Safety Committee meeting meets next Monday, March 1st, 12:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Facilities Committee meets next on Wednesday, March 3rd at 3:30 in the boardroom, followed by Finance HR on the 3rd of March at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Our Policy Committee hosts their next meeting on Thursday, March 4th at 4:00 p.m. in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board, next meeting is Monday, March 8th, 6:00 p.m. at the Maple Grove Charter School. Our Head Start Policy Council, next meets on Tuesday, March 9th at 5:30, and that is a virtual meeting. Our CTP, our Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, meets next on Wednesday, March 10th at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Our next regular monthly board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 17th, 5:30 p.m. here at the High School Auditorium, and also virtually. At this time, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section 19.85, Prent One, Prent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, Prent F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where Prent B applies, which discussed in public, be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Purpose of the closed session is to consider issuance of final notes or non-renewal contract to Kesha Mashick upon the expiration of her contract due to elimination of her position for the 2021-22 school year, and to consider and act upon parental requests for student opt-out status assessments, including the potential for the closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected student or students if the discussion of such an open session be likely to have an adverse effect on the reputation of such student or students pursuant to Section 19.85, Prent One, Prent F, Wisconsin statutes. Any such closed session shall be immediately followed by reconvening in open session for further consideration, and ultimately action upon those requests, on those parental requests. Do I have that motion this evening? Moved by Maria, do I have a second? Second by Kendra. Do we have a roll call on that, please, Tammy?
Tom Galskach.
Aye.
John Lurkey.
Aye.
Kendra Altshuler.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Maria Volkin.
Aye.
Brad Lawler.
Aye.
Lyndy Yingle.
Aye.
Just wanted to take a brief recess and go into our closed session location, and then we will come back for open session as required. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance.